Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lesfront, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhoff.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lesfront. Here.
Treasurer Pierce.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have no formal presentations this evening, so that will take us right into the first portion of public comments. Feel free to comment on anything if it's on the agenda or not, but try to limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for record keeping. So with that, welcome anyone here, and then we'll look and see if anyone virtually has any comments. This is Ms. Wani, she is the Chair of our Parks Committee.
And am I supposed to say I live at 6255 Heathmore Court? Um, I was just at the 30th Street Cemetery today. When we bought that addition to the property, we added trees to, I'm guessing to block the neighbor's views. I think it was a fishbank. We hired the engineering firm to add the trees.
Were we talking 30th Street Cemetery expansion?
Expansion.
When they we bought several years ago, redid it.
Yeah, and put it. And I don't know what was the, anyway, the trees that we added, I was just over there today. The evergreens contain the invasive Japanese knotweed in the soil. So I don't know, and we have a contract with the conservation district strike team to treat invasives in Cascade County or township, so they'll get right after that, which they did yesterday. But I saw on the agenda, the engineering firm, so I don't know how we kind of, because we can't micromanage what they do, but at the same time, I feel like there should be some recourse for if the decision to hire and the trees in the soil are now all going to be dead, what we can go back to and do if something like this would happen in the future. Because I think we'll probably lose at least six good sized evergreens, which I'm assuming were about a thousand dollars piece. I don't know for sure if that's out of my. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay.
I got a question. Is the treatment what's killing them then, or is it the Japanese knot?
The Japanese knotweed is the worst invasive, in my professional opinion. Any little piece makes more, it doesn't spread by seed. And it grows from zero to 12 feet in a year, so it has a enormous root system. It grows through concrete, asphalt. Gaskets.
Um. How did you find, who's, how was it found?
I found it, I did a, I organized a garlic mustard poll at the cemetery in April. And I always get suspicious when you see a lot of the same plant. And I was looking going, no, this can't be this. And of course, now it's like this high. So if you have, in England, oh, I gotta quit talking. Um, in England, if you have Japanese knotweed on your property, you can't get a mortgage. Because it's very difficult to treat and get rid of. And I think what is my prediction is going to be that the roots of the Japanese knotweed are all tangled up in the roots of the tree. But we'll see. We did our first treatment, I'm guessing we'll probably need three or four to get it.
Jenny, the first treatment on the knotweed?
Mm hmm.
Okay, what did you use, just a roundup?
Uh, no, it has.
I dealt with it, it took me four years to get rid of it.
Yeah, there's a, there's a master gardener, it took her 10. Um, the district strike team, because they have a pesticide license, they have stronger, and they're using Garland IV.
Okay.
Which I think is all tricloprir, but don't ask me more about the chemical name, I don't know. But it's stronger than glyphosate.
Yeah, that stuff's amazing.
What is it?
It's.
It's really impressive. If you're really bored some night, go Google Japanese knotweed in British homes, and you can watch your own little horror story as these plants grow through people's houses. It's quite amazing, it's impressive, actually.
Ben, do we know, or do you have any memory, if we this was before my time, but who we used and what the, um, if we have any warranty on that kind of stuff?
I can't remember off the top of my head who the contractor was that won that award, but the landscaping did come with landscaping guarantees, so.
Somebody said it was Cader Berg Verhey, but I have no idea.
Sounds familiar, but they've done a lot of work for us lately, so I just, I don't want to speak out of turn, but it wouldn't surprise me if that is the company.
I just thought in the future, I mean, yeah, going forward.
That's good.
But I'm sure they subcontracted that landscaping work, so I don't know who they subcontracted.
I mean, the good news is it's not all the trees.
It's just the pine trees.
It's just the, uh, I think there's spruces and a couple white pines with the back. So.
Thanks for coming tonight, too, to let us know what the board.
Oh, you're welcome. You're talking parks a lot.
Ben, let's, um, look into that.
Yep, I've got a note.
Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for everything that you guys do. My name is Robert Richardson, 5105 Whitneyville. I have a couple notes that I took, sorry, I don't have this planned super well. Um, so I was looking at the email that was sent out, and everything on there looks great to me, except priority four, the zoning ordinance, particularly task four dash three. It mentions amending the land use zoning for hamlets, which I think is not a great idea. Maybe amend the land use for other zoning issues, but it specifically calls out the area at Cascade and Whitneyville, which is all trees and residential, except for one particular piece of land there. I think it's 4361 Whitneyville, which must be what the person wants to develop into whatever they're hoping to develop. But it's my view that all of the commercial areas in Cascade are along 28th, and then including at Cascade Road and 28th, industrials over by the airport, the rest is residential. But specifically, I mean, I think east of the Thornapple River, it's a clear line, but that should all remain residential permanently. Um, I know there's a few schools and churches maybe throughout there, but the rest is all housing. And I think these things always start off with like best intentions, like, oh, we'll get like a Heide's farm stand or something. But then years down the road, you know, it slowly turns into a strip mall with whatever, a Dollar General and a Cash for Gold and a liquor store. I mean, you can imagine all sorts of bad scenarios, but in any event, I don't think we should have any commercial east of Thornapple River. We don't currently, I think it should remain that way. And I think any development plan for that area, it's already busy enough as far as traffic. And it's 100% residential, so we would have to tear down a bunch of trees, perhaps houses, in order to put up, I don't know, a gas station or a strip mall, whatever the plan would be. But I'm not sure if someone has a specific need, and in that case, I think.
Thirty seconds.
Uh, okay. You know, it is only two miles south of 28th Street. If someone can't get to the commercial district we currently have, maybe we could extend our bus line and and put a bus stop there, if that's what people really want, but that would be better than turning it into a commercial zone, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
If any of our Zoom participants would like to speak during this public comment about anything that's on the agenda, please raise your hand. If you are joining us by phone, please dial star nine, and I'll wait a few moments, supervisor. I don't think there's any speakers.
Okay. Moving on to Article Six, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there discussion or a motion?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to support, but I'd just like to add that John has mentioned in the past many meetings ago about what are we getting from SABO? And I just thought it was a really nice communication update that they provided. It had a lot of statistical analysis of what's going out to the residents, what residents are looking at, and just had a nice feedback. So I, I, I support the consent agenda, I just wanted to put a little kudo out there for that nice summary of what we've been doing to communicate with the residents.
Nice. That's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there a discussion or a motion to approve tonight's financial action? 2022 financial report for June.
Motion to approve. Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the June 22 financial report, June 2022, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article eight, the first item of, oh, excuse me, we have not, uh, no unfinished business tonight, which will bring us to new business, Article nine. The first item, 0462022, and that's approval of the 2022 strategic plan. We have Chris Coring here tonight from McKenna and Associates, who will present the final draft of the strategic plan for this board's review and approval. But before he does that, I just want to say thank you, on behalf of the board, to everyone who participated in the process. And I know I recognize different faces from the different meetings and discussion, discussion topics. So that would include over the two, over 2,000 residents, all the members of the Planning Commission, the DDA, the Parks Committee, and most especially the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee, also township staff. So I think after our extensive survey process, the goals are clear, and if we approve it this evening, we have some tasks before us. Personally, I think one of the immediate priorities would be to make, to, to ensure that our upcoming budget process, even for this year, that we allow that, the time and the opportunity to take into consideration the goals and objectives that fall under the strategic plan. So with that, Mr. Coring, we'll turn over to you, and thanks for coming tonight.
Great. Thank you, Madam Supervisor, good evening, everybody. I met you all before, but my name is Chris Corey, West Michigan manager for McKenna, and proud to present to you tonight the final strategic plan. What I'd like to do tonight, just briefly, is talk about the document itself, and then hit the the priorities that we have under each of the major categories that we determined as part of this as part of this process. I'd like to echo the supervisors' thanks to all who worked on this document, which is quite a long list of people, some of whom are listed on page two, many of whom are not, because we had over, not over, but almost 2,000 residents participate one way or another, through our online surveys, and also through our workshops and focus groups. With that, the document you have in front of you organizes priorities and tasks for the township to play out over the next five-year period, and organizes them in three ways, in order to make them easier to find for those who will use this document over the next several years. The first section organizes them by category, the five categories, which were determined based on our initial public survey, asking the residents what their priorities were. Our parks and trails, land use and economic development, village character and development, preservation of the Thornapple River, and transportation and safety. And then within each of those categories, we have priorities, which I will run through in a moment, just to summarize the document. But the second portion is breaks down those same tasks, but breaks them down by the responsible entity. You will notice that your township board list is pretty long. The reason for that is you guys, as the leaders of the community, are going to be responsible for allocating the resources and delegating the, the personnel who will activate a lot of these tasks, which means you're involved in all of them. So there are quite a few tasks, which the planning commission, the DDA, the Parks Committee will ultimately implement, but they need your guidance and your designation of those resources, so you, they go on your list as well. Other than you guys, the DDA, the Planning Commission, the Parks Committee, the newly created Pathways Committee, the Thornapple Rivers River Special Assessment District Committee, and the ZBA are all listed with tasks list in that section. Finally, we then have a timeline, we put the tasks in timeline order. They're organized by tasks that need to start immediately, which means within one year, but we're, some of those tasks have already begun, which is great. Ongoing processes and policies, which would start now, but may go on for years in order to see their full fulfillment, or may just be ongoing things. Then things in the one-year range, the one-to-two-year range, the two-to-three, the four-to-five, and beyond, as far as timeline goes. Finally, the document concludes with a summary of the public engagement that we heard, so that can be cross-referenced to the actual recommendations. As far as the priorities, I will go through them kind of for the record, and to make sure you guys are on board with them. And I do want to address the one that was brought up by public comment tonight, and get your direction on that. Under parks and trails, we do, our priorities are, one, to ensure the existing parks meet the needs of a portion of the community that they serve. And under each of these, of course, are tasks, but I'm not going to spend all night going through them unless you want me to. Second priority is create a central gathering place for the township. Third priority, create new parks to serve the community as it grows and preserve our natural features for sustainability and natural character. Priority four is to refine the township's parks and recreation organizational structure. Priority five is to ensure sufficient resources, like staffing, et cetera, to assist with efficient project implementation. Moving on to the land use and economic development priorities, number one is to populate our boards and commissions with residents who represent the diversity of the township, and ensure that those that serve on those boards and commissions receive adequate training. Number two is to ensure that our zoning processes are clear, efficient, and promote economic development, but also township planning goals. Number three is to amend the zoning ordinance to ensure it reflects township priorities and market realities. Number four is to update the master plan, and then subsequently the zoning ordinance to position the township for the 2020s and 2030s. This is the priority under which the task that was identified by our public comment tonight, regarding Whitneyville Road and Cascade Road, and the potential for a small commercial node there. That is under this, this priority. A quick description of the purpose of that, that did come up at our public engagement session on land use and economic development. It was thought that a small commercial area east of the river would reduce the reliance on bridges and allow residents in those areas to access amenities and retail services with fewer vehicle miles traveled. The, obviously, it's, it's not intended to clear cut the woods and create a strip, but the specifics would have to be developed as part of the master plan, the zoning ordinance, and eventually the development plan. And of course, all of this can be removed from the document right now, if that is the consensus of the board. And if not, it could still end up not happening, because the planning commission and you guys eventually decide not to put in the master plan. So we've got a few different directions we can go there. And I'd like to revisit that when I finish my presentation. Next priority under land use and economic development is to assess the township's current infrastructure to support its business friendliness. Number six is to establish formal and consistent communication with representatives from the airport. Number seven is to assert sufficient resources, staffing and financial, et cetera, to assist with efficient project implementation. You'll notice that's the same language we had under parks as well. Uh, and then the priority eight is to update the township's brand, including promotional materials, et cetera. Uh, next category is village character and development. First priority under that is to populate our boards and commissions with residents to represent the diversity of the township. Again, similar language we had under land use and economic development, but in this case, we're talking about the DDA. Priority two is to establish an official boundary for what we're calling the upper and lower village districts. The upper village being adjacent to this facility, the lower village being down the hill on Cascade Road. Uh, and then utilize that in the master plan, the zoning ordinance, and the DDA plan, so they're all consistent with each other. The next priority is to update the DDA plan and their, and create a strategic plan for the DDA to make sure that they are sort of pushing in the same direction to establish, to achieve their goals going forward. That process has already sort of soft kicked off, and we'll be moving forward shortly. The next priority is to implement those DDA plans in the upper village, lower village, and of course, along 28th Street. The next priority is to identify and establish opportunities for public-private partnership, particularly with redevelopment, and particularly with community projects. For third, sixth priority is to enhance the local community spirit with additional events and festivals. Seventh is to ensure sufficient resources to assist with efficient project implementation. There's a pattern there, that we want to make sure that our boards and commissions are adequately staffed and have the resources to succeed. Our next topic is the preservation of the Thornapple River. First priority is establishing the sustainability and environment section of the master plan to describe actionable steps on the Thornapple, some of which are already underway. Second is to ensure sufficient resources to make sure that we can get these things done. Again, you'll, you'll see a pattern there. And lastly, transportation and safety. First priority is to enhance our road safety and streetscape, promote self, or safe, well-connected, walkable envir, bikeable environment, especially in the village area. Second is to continue our partnerships with the road commission, prioritize various bike facilities. Third is continue their partnerships with the road commission to address safety concerns. We had many of those come up at our public engagement on roads. Fourth is to partner with the Rapid and potentially a private transportation company to improve our service along 28th Street, potentially replacing Route 29 with a more flexible system that would be rather than a fixed route. And that is already underway with the Transportation Committee of the DDA. And then last, again, we need those sufficient staffing and financial resources, and so that goes under this topic as well. With that, I will take any questions, comments, revisions, and specifically some direction on task, land use task four three. Yes, sir.
In your introduction, you, you said that you had a number of focus groups, workshops with the township board. I don't remember having a workshop. Did I miss it?
I believe.
We had one, I think.
Danielle Bouchard from my office was here with you guys at some point to go through.
She gave an update.
Yeah.
Do you call that a workshop?
No, did you end up not, did you not have a full, well, I could, I could cross you out of that list if it's not.
We didn't have the workshop yet.
Okay.
I think we had the place with a worksheet, and then she had us write down our priorities and then turn them in, and that was the, similar to what she did with the other committees and commissions.
I know we did that with all the boards, with the other boards and commissions. Did we not do that with this group? I thought we did.
No, we did not sit down with you.
Okay.
We sat down with Danielle with the worksheet where we all filled out our, do you remember?
Yeah, but, yeah, but we didn't, the board didn't have a work session with McKenna individually.
That was part of the board meeting, I don't know if you'd call that a quibble over the term, but.
It wasn't, was it, it was separate, that was either before a board meeting or at a different time, that wasn't part of a regularly scheduled public meeting.
That was next meeting, above and beyond.
When you're graph showing the existing parks, you show Watermark Country Club, Quell Ridge Country Club, and Thornapple Point Country Club. How do they fall into the category of existing?
That is, that's a good point, they, they are, those are obviously not parks and should be noted on the map as such. They are obviously existing green spaces and recreational spaces, but they're private. Yeah.
And you also do not have the church and the hill property on the map.
Yeah, we can do that as well.
Right. Probably a basic question is, I didn't see any measurement process for seeing how these, at the one year, what have we accomplished? Scorecard. Measurement.
Sure, I, I would say that that is the section three of the document where it lays out, these are the things that should be done prior to one year from now, prior to two years from now. And they're laid out in, that's where it's laid out in timeline order.
We're just gonna look back on it and say, we did this, we did this, we missed this one.
Well, actually, the Advisory Committee, the strategic plan, has expressed an interest in continuing to meet going forward in order to be the body that does exactly that, and is the, to rename themselves the Strategic Plan Implementation Committee, and to be basically a hub of communication between the boards and commissions to keep everyone on track. The Advisory Committee met twice a month, I think this, it's next iteration, we're probably only meet once a month, but to get reports from each body as to what they're doing, and if they're not on track for there to be sort of peer pressure to get on track, because everybody else is. That's the, the method we're envisioning.
That'd be good, thank you.
Chris, um, I think the document is excellent, I think everybody did a fantastic job. I, I'm really excited by it. I have a lot of questions. I would still like to, you know, before I vote on it at some point, and, because I think it'll be unanimously approved. But I do think we need to have a workshop, I have a lot of questions, some of the top, top level ones are like, I sometimes read the term master plan and strategic plan. Were those to be synonymous, because I was confused, I didn't get the document until Monday.
Okay.
And probably spent four or five hours on it. And sometimes I saw the word strategic plan, sometimes I saw the master plan, and for about an hour, I figured out, I think, what you meant to say was strategic plan, sometimes when you meant master plan. So are you referring to the 10-year mandated, state mandated master plan that we do for the state of Michigan?
Yes.
Okay.
So when the, when it says, now, I'll preface this by saying, if there's places that refer to the master plan that really should be referring to strategic plan, we'll make sure to fix that, and please point them out to me.
Yeah, there are some of those.
Ordinarily, but, but they are intended to be two different documents. Strategic plan is this, the master plan is, as you mentioned, the, the, the planning and zoning document that is required by the state to be updated at least every 10 years, reviewed every five. It's the planning commission's document primarily, but obviously you guys adopted, and it is most importantly, the basis for your zoning. So where it gets referenced a lot is in areas where the, the strategic plan is recommending changes to your planning and zoning policies, such that the master plan would be changed, followed by the zoning ordinance being changed, and the, to, to give the planning commission either new tools or new direction.
Because I was sometimes, I was reading it, and I thought, do they really mean this strategic plan, or do they mean the master plan? I think there's some, it's a little nebulous, and I, there's a lot of examples, so I won't go through them all. But that's why I'd like to have a workshop to go through some of those, to make sure we clarify, like when we say enshrine something in the master plan, well, I don't think we can change the existing master plan, because it's already been adopted by the, by the state, approved by the state. So I think you mean want to incorporate it into the next subsequent master plan? Or did you mean to include it into this strategic plan?
No, I'm, what we meant by that is to do an update to the master plan, not a complete rewrite, but to amend portions of it, adopt it through the state-required process, so it is official, officially updated. But yeah, it is to, to actually update that document, not this one, but, but that one. And it's not a document for you guys' website, but the, the master plan that you have to make tweaks to it so that it can give the planning commission new direction.
And another, a few things, again, a lot of it just, they're very minor, but I think important things. For example, the, the purpose says, is to clearly describe and prioritize the actions to be taken by the boards, et cetera. And when I look at a strategic plan, it's not, you know, tactical, these are the 127 things we're gonna do. But a strategic plan is really, I kind of said, thought the purpose is to serve as a roadmap that describes the guiding principles, priorities, and proposed actions for the township boards, committees, staffs, et cetera. And I think final actions will be contingent on resource availability, financial evaluation, and township board approval.
Okay.
And that's not in the document, and I think that's really important, because, for example, in one of the pages, it says, we're gonna hire three more people. So you're saying, right up front, these are actions to be taken, and then a couple pages later, you said, hire three more people. Well, I think we need to make sure that it's financially feasible, that we've done an evaluation. Although I did see, which was good, that later on page 27, you reworded that as explore hiring additional township staff versus the hire additional township staff.
Yes.
So I found some conflicts from the beginning and in the back that I'd just like to have cleared up. And I think we, I think we can do this pretty easily. Again, the document is great, but, but when, when residents read things like that, oh, we're gonna hire township staff, and then another portion that says, some of their priorities were make sure we don't increase taxes. Well, if we're saying in one place, we're gonna definitely hire three additional staff, and if someplace else it says explore, I, I just think we need to clarify those for not only the residents, but for ourselves.
Yeah, absolutely, I like the language that you, that you said about, you know, these things are subject to change based on the financial realities and township board approval and that kind of thing. So absolutely, I think that's a good idea to add something like that, and then. So absolutely, I think that's a good idea to add something like that, and then the more, you know, the language that says things like explore, and that also goes to what we had the public comment on about a change to the master plan, which, so we can. The important thing about this document is it's saying, this is what the planning commission should be discussing on this topic. And if the, if their ultimate goal or the ultimate decision is, we're not gonna change the master plan in that way, or if the ultimate decision is, we're not hiring a new parks director. You're still, you're still fulfilling the strategic plan by just talking about it and making that decision. So you're still, still has value. So absolutely, I think.
Yeah, I don't wanna, you know, nitpick tonight, every one of these, but but I do think, because 99% of the work's been done, but some of this little fine tuning, if we could have a, just one maybe workshop, or I I can write, I mean, I've got a lot of pages of notes, but overall, again, the document's really great. I just want to make sure that we communicate effectively to ourselves and to the public of what we are gonna approve.
Yeah, we did a workshop and Ben, you can work with staff maybe to schedule it. Maybe it would be easiest before the next board meeting.
If we did a six PM before your seven PM or something like that.
Or coordinate a time that works for the board. We'll publicly notice it, but I think that's a good idea. And if it's not most convenient to do it before our next meeting, we'll make sure it's well noticed out in our website and all that kind of stuff. I agree.
Because I would also like, you know, if as we kind of refine this and fine tune it, that we then republish it so the public can can read it. That's why I don't want to do it right immediately before a vote. Let's get it out there, let you make the changes, and then let's put it back out for the public to look at, then we vote on it.
And Chris, you guys have done such a good job. I mean, you've kept it to your initial bid, this, so if if we're going beyond that, you need, I mean, we're not trying to shortchange you, but if we have an additional meeting that's not covered.
You know, that's not an issue at this point, because I want to make sure this is the document that the board wants it to be. And it sounds like that we are down to wording and things like that, so. Yeah, and and absolutely, there's no issue with doing that, so.
I have a comment. This is really well done. However, you are a professional planner and I am in the weeds a bit, I'll be honest. What would be helpful, I think, I saw some overlap and terminology that overlapped. And so when you're reading through this, like kind of in book form, I'm like, wait, that was over here and it was called this. And so I don't know if there's a way to present it that's maybe a chart. Some way to show, with concentric circles showing the overlap of the groups maybe, but to understand who does what. This was kind of confusing to me. Not who does what, but just some of the terminology was, I don't feel comfortable accepting it. At this point, I feel like this is still in draft form for my way of thinking, just because I don't feel comfortable enough with all the things.
No, that makes sense to me. I I'm thinking of a couple of ways that we can be responsive to that. I mean, one would be a glossary if we need to define terms like master plan, but the other would be, we do have, we have what? We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven boards and commissions and five priorities and task categories. Right? And within each of the categories, s- some, but not all of the boards and commissions have responsibilities.
Right. I understand that.
And perhaps we can create a graphic to lead off the document that shows that sort of Venn diagram or something like that. But I can noodle on that.
Man, supervisor, I I think we're gonna get unanimous approval on this, and I think it's, the, all the committees, the groups, advisory committee has done a great job. But maybe I'd like to consider that we tabled this until we have a, maybe a workshop with McKenna, which wouldn't take about a few hours, maybe even we even put it up on a chart and go through it page by page, because I can point out specific things.
Yeah.
That are just against important but minor refinements.
No, this is good because I think I'm more familiar with it because I, from being on the direct commission, committees and commissions, but ultimately, the, this board is the only group that's directly responsible to voters. We're the only elected body. Everybody else is appointed and they've done, and everyone's doing a wonderful job. But ultimately, this board is, steers the ship, so.
Yeah.
You, this is fantastic, but I agree, I think just.
And we did move this to you guys pretty quickly. Our second survey, when, which was our, you know, check back with the public as to whether we were on the right direction, only closed at the beginning, or not even at the beginning of the month, but the end of the first week of the month, right? It's only like two, three weeks ago. And then we turned, made the revisions based on that, turned around and got to you guys. So, you know, it, there's, there has not been a lot of time to do that kind of refinement because we were reacting to the public. So I I would be, I would welcome that opportunity.
Yeah, as long as it's at the, and so now it's in front of the board, the ultimate decision-making body, and we can schedule at least one workshop, maybe have some, you can coordinate with some, with staff. Can I, I want to comment though on Mr. Richardson's question. I hadn't caught that before. I agree with him 100%.
So do I.
I don't want a commercial hamlet up.
That was one of my, in my notes too.
And I ran for supervisor because I thought that the township wasn't doing enough proactive planning to to keep Cascade a quaint residential community that was with green space and that kind of stuff, because the Greater Grand Rapids area is, we're surpassing our own growth calc-, you know, estimates, and I think it's I don't want to focus, I mean, we've got the economic development, we're fortunate for that, but I think the priority on, from a zoning perspective, to be to preserve the the residential unique character before we get gobbled up by both residential and commercial developments. I don't want any more 28th Street strip mall sprawl, even Tommy's Car Wash, I get it, but that's a
With you on that one.
Yeah, I don't think this is envisioning that, but I also like, you know, you're the ultimate arbiters and this came out of a conversation at a couple of the tables that.
I think I remember the comment.
It it can stop here if that's where it wants to stop, and so.
I'm glad you raised it. I I think that's the worst I, no, Chris, you're a professional planner and 50 years from now it'll be different, but if if we're doing a wrong, if we're not getting it right, we'll be bumped out at the next election, but I'm all for preserving the parts of Cascade that we have.
And that was one, by the way, that same thing about that mixed-use hamlet out there, that was in my notes to. So, so I would like, could I, could I, could I make a motion that we table this until we make a motion that we table this until we have a chance to go through a workshop with the board?
Can I ask one question of Chris while we have him here? How did the thing about the airport come up? And that's only because I've had some conversations with the airport. We've got a couple outstanding issues, and I'm just curious how that made it to the top.
There was a moment. Well, A, it came up in some of our focus groups because people have various thoughts about the airport, right? And I know you have some specific issues with them, but also people like it as a, a community asset, they like going and watching planes, but also it's not a great neighbor because it's an airport, right? And what, at one point in the process, we found out almost by accident that the airport was doing a planning process. And we sat down with advisory committee and no one around the table knew that was happening. And we thought that indicates some sort of communication breakdown that needs to be remedied with a form, with some sort of formal communication process that happens on a consistent basis. And I'm not trying to criticize anything, I'm just that, that sort of, we happened upon that as part of this process, and so that's where it came to the head is like, hey, we need to know what the airport's doing and they know what we're doing. Because, you know, if you look at their planning process, it's got some dramatic things, like a road from 36th Street into the airport, or even a train downtown. And it's like, that's all cool, but like, the township could be involved in those discussions if they're thinking big like that, right? So, and and I'm not, as as far as I know, those are just ideas that are being kicked around, so I'm not saying this is happening. But again, these are reasons why we need to communicate, I think.
So can I formally say, I'd like to make a motion to table the approval of the township strategic plan until the board has a workshop session and is able to refine the plan and present it to the public, then vote on it.
I'll second your motion.
And we'll work with Ben on scheduling that workshop.
I think it's fantastic. It's just nice to have it in front of the board and.
Yeah, I think this is, this is a logical final step here. That I think will get you guys the document you need.
I hope you don't get sick as Cascade.
Well, I know, I, I mean, honestly, first of all, I'm grateful to the DDA for some of the things that they are asking us to do going forward. And we'd like to be part of the Strategic Plan Implementation Commission, Committee, just to be part of the advisory committee on this, which we've talked to supervisor about, so, no, in fact, quite the opposite. Love to keep working with you guys as long as you'll let us. So, yeah, we'll, we'll get that workshop scheduled and then we'll get the, get this finalized.
Do we have to vote on the table?
So that's a motion by trustee McDonald to table approval of the strategic plan until after an additional, at least one additional board workshop and discussion period.
And 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 presentation to public.
And presentation, public presentation. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Great, thank you, folks.
Item 047, 2022, approval of a request for proposals for engineering services. Manager Swayze?
Great, thank you. So we're currently served by Fishbeck to provide general engineering services to the township, as well as some specialized services. Michael Baravote says, most recently served as a township engineer, but other various Fishbeck staff have assisted township in their areas of expertise. We've also used, utilized other firms and past cases of specialized needs and or larger projects. Fishbeck has served as our engineer for a considerable amount of time. And earlier this summer, the township board directed the staff to prepare a request for proposals for engineering services, just as we have done for several of our other professional services over the past couple of years. So I included a proposed RFP in your packet for your review. So the proposed schedule for issuing the RFP, should it be approved by the township board, is that we would issue the request for proposals on or before August 5th. That just allows time for our legal team to review the final language in the RFP before it goes out. If that review is ready prior to August 5th, it'll be, it'll be let whenever that review is done. We would give entities a month to respond, so the proposals would be due September 2nd. My anticipation is that the full township board would evaluate the proposals September 14th. And that we would hold a work session or work sessions the week of September 19th, again with the full board to have follow-up presentations or interviews with the prospective bidders. And then I would anticipate that a township board would approve a contract on September 28th, 2022. The contract work would begin October 3rd, 2022. Did note that if the awarded, if it's awarded to a firm that doesn't currently consult for the township, we would have one month of overlapping work to bring the new firm up to speed on current issues in the township. That is the same process we used with our legal services, RFP. So the full township board would be responsible for evaluating this number of proposals, unless you guys choose to appoint an ad hoc committee to do it instead. So again, review the proposals at a pre-meeting work session on September 14th. Have the interviews and presentations that following week and offer a contract on the 28th. Just like our other RFPs, we don't put any formal evaluation criteria, but we do focus on six points when evaluating proposal. The first is verification of the basic information provided by the firm. Second is the completeness of the proposal. Third is responsiveness to all elements outside, outlined in the request for proposal. The fourth is the experience and qualifications of the proposed township engineer and all team members identified. Number five is the experience and results in performing the services desired by the township. And six, of course, last but not least, the cost proposal that is most advantageous to the township. So we're issuing the RFP, just like all the other ones we have, really don't have any direct cost to the township, only the staff time related to the issuance of the RFP. And of course, our actual cost for engineering services during a fiscal year can fluctuate greatly depending on the activities of that year. Also want to make sure that you guys know there's language in the RFP that reiterates it's not an exclusive contract. So the township would still reserve the right in the future, if we had a specialized project or a big project, but we wanted to competitively bid again, we wouldn't just have to use the firm that's selected through this process. We could do that like we do now. With that, staff is recommending the board approve the issuance of the request proposal for township legal services, contingent upon approval of the RFP language by the legal.
You mean, legal service or engineering?
Sorry, engineering services.
Yeah, I just said the title.
Discussion?
Ben, who determines who you're gonna send this to?
So I have a list of about 16 municipal engineering companies that I'm aware of in the state of Michigan. It'll be sent directly to all of them, but we'll also send it to the standard industry companies for last of the letter term. There's companies that, like the builders exchange, that they, their business is advertising RFPs. So a lot of times we'll put an RFP out there and somebody will get it off the builder's exchange rather than getting it directly. But it'll be put on the township website as well.
I know, and I noticed there's a lot of things in here that we've talked about, maybe being able to hire an engineer to do for us. We haven't gotten to a point where we ask for any updates, but we haven't been successful in attracting one yet. But any one of the things in here that are in the RFP, if we have an, in our own engineer, we could still utilize them to do that, that's right.
Correct. There'd be nothing, so if we're eventually lucky enough to find the right candidate to come and be a staff engineer, we would be able to do that in-house and then the services that are provided by the consultant would continue to.
Okay.
Just an as-needed basis.
If, if my little pea brain is focusing on figures correctly, there could be a lot of financial savings by Ben having somebody on his staff to do the smaller jobs and then calling upon whoever the company is to do the larger jobs. And that would be at his discretion, who he has do what. But after seeing the bill for the pathways last year, I vote pro. And that's all I have to say.
I move to approve issuance of the RFP for engineering services.
And I support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the request for proposals for engineering services. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, item 048, 2022. These next three all came from trustee Nordhook. So I'll introduce or I'll read them out loud and then trustee Nordhook, if you want to give a little introduction and Ben can supplement facts. It would, first would be modification of the township's deer hunting application process for hunting on township property.
Well, we've had comments about deer overpopulation in the township, several meetings in a row here. I just want to make this process a little more fair, advertise it for like 10 days that we're gonna be doing a drawing or a lottery for deer hunting permits in our park. And I would like to separate it out into three hunts. Hunt one would be for the month of October, the 15 permits. Hunt two would be for the month of November. And hunt three would be the remainder of the deer hunting season, which I believe the archery season does trickle into January a little bit. But that way, everybody would have an opportunity. We might get several different hunters with different skill levels and maybe take more deer out of these parks. I'd even like to see Burton Park, if we could get a few archery permits in there. And then I would ask some landowners that have a little larger parcel, if they'd be open to having a hunter or two come to their place and take some deer out. We could supply some names to, for you guys to interview on your parcels. But anyway, yeah, I want to get this fair and honest. Get it out to everybody so everybody has an equal chance to get a permit. Hopefully, I I'd also like to have the hunters report back whatever their deer they harvest, so we have an idea of what's been taken out of our parks to help us with future management. That is the idea behind the deer hunt, to get it opened up and everybody have a fair and equal opportunity.
Manager Swayze, can you contrast that with what we have now and then also just a little background? I think it's only for Peace Park, right?
Yeah, so right now, we only offer hunting in Peace Park, and I think I mentioned this last time too, that was really an artifact of, we needed additional points on our grant application to be able to secure funding for that. At the time, one of the things that the N R was focusing in their grant proposals was hunting, so we did include that. Certainly, we can get staff together. These are all things where we can put together. Certainly, we can get staff together. These are all things where we can put together, um, uh, some proposals for the board to consider. It is a little onerous is that for some reason, uh, I wasn't involved in the process, but the rules for the hunting were actually enshrined in the ordinance, uh, rather than, uh, giving the township board the ability to adopt policies. So, uh, we have to do either one of two things. We'd have to reduce the ordinance to say that the township board can promulgate hunting rules and regulations in the parks, or we'd actually have to change the regulations in the ordinance. So, um, uh, either way, you know, it goes through a, a public hearing process, but just a little bit more onerous in deciding, hey, we're gonna change a policy in one meeting and it being done. But, um, all these things are certainly, uh, things that we can put together, uh, a benefits analysis, bring it back to the park and, uh, you know, draft some potential ordinance language, run it by our legal counsel and, uh, come back to the, um, the board with something. I just, I don't anticipate it would be done for hunting season this year, um, but, uh, we could fast track it if that is the desire of the board.
I, I, I like the idea of making some of the changes that Timmy said. I did want to just, I like the latter idea, so it's not who can come at four AM and stand in line and be, be the first one. So I like the latter idea more than anything. Can we, is it the, but I know that obviously the state sets the, the dates for the hunting. Can we specify an October, November, December?
Yeah, so it's our property. We can, you know, we, we wouldn't have, be able to have any rules that are more lax than state regulations. So we couldn't tell people they could bow hunt in April if the state doesn't allow bow hunting in April. But as long as our regulations are at least as strict as the state, uh, or aren't in conflict with state hunting regulations, we can choose to do that.
Because one other thing that I think Timmy mentioned at one point or was referring to was that we'd also like to kind of, uh, recycle the licenses. So for example, if a hunter goes out on one day, one or day two out of fifteen and meets his quota, gets his quota, because you're only allowed so many deer, that puts another license back in the pool. So I'd like to then have a, a secondary, you know, let, let the hunter report that what they got and have a secondary and third and fourth lottery to provide those permits for additional hunters. Since we've taken one or two or three out of the pool if they reach the max quota.
Since we have such a problem with deer.
More deer than mayor.
And by the way, I have to say, because I worked on that with that, on, on the, the, you know, the, the grant for the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund and all the points they gave for, for deer. But the, somebody had brought in, uh, an article from the Grand Rapids Press, historical article, that the largest buck ever taken down in Kent County was in Peace Park. And then, and, and we, we put that in our application or grant process to the DNR and they, they like that. So there are, there are a lot of deer there.
I'd like to make motion to, uh, request that staff, um, look into the, uh, best way to, to deal with this because I like it too. I think it's more fair than what we have now, but, um, may have staff come back with a recommendation that we can approve.
So that's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee McDonald to, um, direct staff to approve or direct staff to prepare for board approval, whatever, um, yeah, whatever modifications are.
Ordinance then?
Yeah, so we're gonna have to have ordinance modifications because again, for whatever reason, the hunting rule, I think even the first come, first served is actually codified in our ordinance. So, um, we'll have to, we'll have to do an ordinance update and everything.
Uh, should we fast track it? Just like everybody else wants everything fast tracked? We'll just add it to the fast track list?
We'll work on it as fast as we can.
All right, thanks, Ben. Oh, uh, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next up, item zero four nine, twenty twenty-two. Modification of the township cemetery ordinances to allow for green burials in Cascade Township. Trustee Nordhook, you're on fire tonight. Let's hear a little background.
Well, I, I've been finding out and hearing from several different areas that this is becoming more and more popular to have the green burial, which, um, is basically a, uh, back to nature grave site. You, uh, you are not embalmed. You don't have a casket. You don't have a, uh, a cement box. You are just wrapped in a biodegradable hundred percent cotton sheet or shroud and placed in your grave. So, uh, people are starting to choose that over cremation or traditional burials. It's a little cheaper than a traditional burial because you don't have the products, but, uh, more and more townships are, are coming around, uh, to, to allowing this service. So, I thought, well, Cascade Township can do it. That's, uh, it's, uh, kind of back to the, back to the pilgrims days.
I think we have some of those green burials in the back corner of the cemetery.
We may. We don't know who they are yet.
Just out of pure coincidence on the news is, last night or night before, was quite an article on green burials and how forests of America, I believe, has got several, uh, maintained forests around the United States. And they simply mix ashes with some soil and place them around a tree. And the tree's got a marker on it, so nobody gets lost. And it's simply go to the forest and you can be returned to nature that way. So I think that there's a lot of options in green burial. Certainly, it would be a, a, uh, a step away from the way that we've traditionally done it here. But it could also be financially enhanced for us too by doing such. I think that there's more and more call for green burials, perhaps with simply a rock as a marker or an oak tree as a marker. And those can be picked out ahead time by the family or the soon to be deceased. So I think it's very worthwhile project to, uh, dwell into.
Trustee McDonald?
I, I would just like to say, um, it sounds like a good idea. I think it is, and it's very environmentally sound. Uh, I would like to, clerk Slater's worked a lot on our, um, cemetery over the years. I'd like to ask if we could have clerk Slater look into this a little, in a little more detail, do some research and just come back and make recommendations to the board. I, I think it's a good idea. I think it'll probably pass. I did note that I went in and searched on our ordinances for green burial and didn't find anything. And according to the Michigan Township Association, quote from one of the representatives, she said, if you don't have it in the ordinance, you would have no power to restrict it. So I think we need to have a recommendation of, do we put this in our ordinance? Because, and Ben, maybe you're gonna correct me.
Yeah, so, um, while we don't have anything that in our ordinance that references green burial, we do have sections of our ordinance that refer, references. You have to be in a vault. Okay. Um, so right now, uh, based on that same language, we don't allow green burials because we have that vault regulation. So, same thing with the, the deer ordinance, right? You know, I think, uh, in fact, I think Chrissy's already started, uh, doing research on this when it was brought up a little, a little bit before. Uh, I have a little election going on right now, so I think her, uh, mind is in other places. Ultimately, whatever recommendation comes back to the board again is going to have to go through that ordinance process.
Okay.
Um, rather than just be a policy change of the board.
So are you saying, so can we still do some research and come back and say, yes, we should change the ordinance? And then would we vote yes or no to change the ordinance to include green burials?
So probably we'll do it the, the same way we'll do, we'll handle the, the hunting one, is that we will do the research, we'll work with our legal team. We'll draft potential ordinance language that the board could consider, um, if it wants to. Um, and then on top of that, uh, I think Sue and Chrissy can do some research on, uh, because I think there's, there's some cons in there as well. So again, probably a, um, just a benefit analysis so the board can know, hey, if we do allow this, um, what are some of the issues? The nice thing is, right, you know, at least in the limited research that I have done, uh, one of the cons tends to be the mixture of green burials and non-green burials. Um, and we're lucky to have, uh, new section of our cemetery. Uh, it has four sections that are completely unused right now. So, we're ahead of the game is that if we needed to have a dedicated section of the cemetery to green burials, we don't have to build something else. We, we have that available, so.
What are the cons of having the two mixed together?
So it really comes when you're, when it comes to digging up, right? So, when, you know, right now, especially in the, the more filled up section of thirtieth cemetery, when the crew gets ready to dig a site, they basically have a, a probe in there and they probe and they can hit the sections of the vault, so they know exactly where to bury, right? So, if you don't have anything to probe and all of a sudden you're buried, you're digging where you think you should be digging, remains, even the, the vaults, they, they shift, you know, under and not to be gruesome, but you come up with a femur bone or something like that. You know, it's nice that if you have to have different digging procedures for your green burials, you can do have that digging procedure all in a certain section of the cemetery.
Makes sense.
Can I speak to that? Yes. So I, uh, looked into this a little bit with, uh, the Michigan Township Association Township Cemetery Management Manual, which is written by our own Cliff Bloom. And he states in here that any township that wants to consider allowing green burials in either newer existing cemeteries must outline specifications in the township cemetery ordinance, which is what Ben just said, as to where green burials can occur and under what circumstances. If your township is considering allowing green burials, you may wish to consider eliminating the vault requirement from the township cemetery ordinance. Alternately, vaults could be required in certain areas while other areas designated for green burials where vaults would not be required, which supports what Ben did just say. Um, I will say, I personally initially was extremely opposed to this idea because we don't really need to. We have plenty of room. This is happening in places where they're running out of room, like New York City, for example, um, where the, the areas are quite built up. But as I have done some looking into it, um, I believe it was Abraham Lincoln where they first did embalming and a vault when they had to transport his body to watch from one city to another. And so I got to thinking back to when, uh, as Timmy said, since the beginning of time, they've buried people in a, in a special shroud. I mean, you spend nine hundred dollars on a wicker basket, if you like. So they use a special cloth or shroud and it has to be deep enough so that the, um, aerobic decomposition will occur. So you do have to be very specific about it. I don't think there's any rush, but I think we can start looking into this. Definitely, as Ben said, we would want to have a dedicated area for it. And so, um, I'm wondering if it's something we should hold a public hearing and see how the public feels about it. Just as a matter of interest, if we want to be transparent.
So, an ordinance, uh, change actually requires a public hearing?
Perfect.
I, I would recommend, and I believe most of the places that are doing it do have a designated area for green burials.
Right.
And, uh, yeah, I understand the depth is four foot.
In a, in as and if staff looks into it, it'd also be nice to know, or do some research, is it all of our cemeteries? For example, would Whitneyville and Snow be able to accommodate this? I, I don't know, but that's something we should also look into.
I thought of that because they're not as large and I don't know that there are any sections that are untouched. We'd have to check it out.
Because we have about four cemeteries?
Three.
Three? Yes, Whitneyville, Snow and the thirtieth.
Correct.
Do they all have Japanese, um, not wood or just? Not yet? Make sure that's not the plant you select with your. Yeah. Ms. Bratt?
To piggyback on what Sue said, um, and what Ben said, that, you know, if we had a little more time to do some research, right now we're, like Ben said, we're in the middle of an election. So, if you just give us some time, I'd be happy to. It is, we have been discussing it, so I'd be happy to, to look into it.
While we're on the topic, can Sue or Chrissy, can you go over the, uh, the policy we have for residents and plots? I think it's pretty generous, right? Compared to a lot of other communities?
Um, I just happen to have that with me. Our policy is two graves are allowed to a resident at time of need. And if a resident has moved out of the township, we have a formula which is if the time they have been gone is less than half the amount of time they lived here, they're still entitled to two graves. So say they lived here twenty years. They've only been gone nine years. They're still entitled. If they've lived here twenty years, but they've been gone fifty years, they're not entitled. They're also old, correct. So, um, it's.
Do we get people trying to, um, take advantage of that?
All the time. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we have to, we have to, um, have very clear guidelines and.
And we don't do reservations because it's that time of need. We do have some that were reserved from many, many, many decades ago. So.
Chrissy's in the process of doing, um, a certificate deed type document to give to the people for the remain, say a wife dies and her husband has selected two graves and then she'll give him a copy of a document that entitles him to be buried there so that we have some paper trail. So we're working on that.
What we're running into is that, you know, lots of, uh, handshake deals were done in the nineteen sixties and fifties. So, um, it's just a work in progress in general, but I'm getting there. I'm, I'm like this close to being done with Cascade.
So, you're doing a good job. Thank you.
I, I make a motion to direct staff to research, uh, green barrel options and come up with, uh, language for an ordinance, which would be required at a public hearing, uh, for the Cascade Township cemeteries.
Shipley supports.
That's a motion by trustee McDonald to, uh, to direct staff to prepare for board approval.
Options and ordinance language?
Yeah, potential ordinance modifications, um, to allow for green burials. Supported by trustee Shipley. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Lastly, zero five zero, twenty twenty-two, compensation rate for planning commission members. Trustee Nordup?
Well, we just went through a major committee on Round Hill and the planning commission members had over twenty separate committee meetings on that. These guys have spent a lot of time. They're currently on another committee working with the wormies, not really the wormies, but how the wormies happened, working on regulations there, process. So, something like that is done properly. But these guys go out and do site visits on everything that comes up in front of the planning commission. They never asked for mileage. And I had noticed that the pay scale for these guys was, uh, forty-five dollars a meeting. Nothing for their committee meetings, nothing. And they don't claim mileage and they're not in it for the money, but they, we have a really good planning commission right now. It's, it's working for the community. I also notice they don't get the annual pay increases like everybody else that, uh, works for this township. And I thought, boy, that's odd. Maybe that's how they got so far behind. I went to the Michigan Township Association website. Very difficult to navigate for pay with all the different communities and townships and what they're paying for their staff, their boards, their committees, their planning commissions. Most of them don't report anything. If I got it right, Ada did post theirs at ninety dollars a meeting. So, again, if anybody has something different on that, let me know now, but that's what I was working off of. What do you have, Ken?
I don't have anything specific. I, I agree that there should be some change in the compensation, but I, I asked Ben and Katie to do some surveying in the county to look at other municipalities to see what they're, if ninety dollars is the, is the norm, that's fine. And I thought we need a broader spectrum of examples and then just one.
I went with one that was pretty comparable to our township, was a, I didn't go to, you know, the northern townships, the small ones.
Graham Evans Township, Plainfield, Gaines.
They weren't on the site.
Make phone call.
They'd make phone calls.
I, I just, they, I'm, I'm not opposed to this. Just, we need a broader spectrum of.
Well, that's what we're looking here to get a broader spectrum. I, I just want to get these guys up to speed. Uh, they've been left in the dirt by not getting their annuals. And I don't know when they were originally put at forty-five dollars. It was ten years ago or.
You're on the planning commission, right?
I am.
The self-interest behind this.
Uh, no.
I, I think what you're asking, Timmy, is we, can we evaluate the compensation for the planning commission? And then can recommendations be made based upon that evaluation?
I'm very happy with that and I, and I'd also like to include them on the annual increases so they don't get left behind again.
Ben, is that fairly easy to ask around Kentwood, whomever, grandparent's township?
Yep, and as Ken mentioned, he talked to Katie today, and I think she's already started on that. You know, we can have that in short order. Don't need an ordinance change to bump the pay for the planning commissioner. So that's something that we should be able to do in pretty short order. If not, the next meeting, certainly by the end of August.
Madam Supervisor, do you want a motion on that?
Sure. Yeah, I just want to say they have been doing absolutely fantastic work for the township. Ms. Wani on the Parks Committee, it's not really fair to have this discussion in front of her because she doesn't get anything for serving, but she's, the hour she's putting in, especially with invasive species, you might be the highest paid. You're certainly the most underpaid employee in Cascade Township. But we'll have that conversation at a later date. I don't want to open up the floodgates right now.
Then I make a motion, we evaluate compensation for the planning commission and make recommendations to the board for what that should be, including potential pay increases based on the economy, as Timmy said.
Do we include the zoning board of appeals?
Who gets paid right now? What boards or commissions get paid?
Planning Commission and ZBA.
I just want to look at both.
Yep, okay, evaluate that we evaluate compensation for the planning commission and ZBA, and then make recommendations accordingly.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald to evaluate the ZBA and planning commission compensation levels, supported by trustee Kessel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, trustee Nordup, for bringing that up to the board's attention, getting the ball rolling.
And just to make Ginny feel good, I was on the planning mission for nine years and I didn't get paid. So, so don't feel alone.
Don't go anywhere, though.
Right, yeah, stick with us, please, Jenny.
Article ten, discussion. Any items?
I got a question. Ben, do we have any further update on Egypt Creek?
Unfortunately, we do not. We have been stonewalled by both the owner of Egypt Creek and their attorney. So unfortunately, we have had to turn around and get our attorney back involved again.
Okay.
So he is on a summer trip with his family right now, but we anticipate that he'll be at the top of those lists when he comes back.
I kind of figured that was the direction that the, the, uh, lack of their term defendants were going to take.
It's unfortunate because I did think we had a good meeting with them to start out with. They said all the things that we expected them to say, but for them, that's a, for us to get in touch with both the owner and their attorney on multiple occasions now without a response isn't appropriate.
Thank you, Ben.
We still need the state's cooperation also. We're gonna.
I kind of wrote state office being broke.
I don't know if broke's the right word, but.
No, they're busted. The fact that it's taking so long for them to respond appropriately to an environmental problem and a could very well be a sanitary problem. I think that's unacceptable from the state of Michigan or any of their departments. They are broke.
We are the elected officials of the township. Our hands are a little bit tied because this is totally a state matter. It's in their jurisdiction.
They're coming up for an election, too.
Yep.
Just remember that.
That's what I was going to say, we've got state elected officials, too. So we'll do our end as far as contacting those state representatives, and we would encourage anybody else to also. They work for you guys. Good question.
I'm done.
I think we have to, after that Round Hill presentation at our last meeting, I think we have to formally bring that in to our process. They know those guys, they come up with the software to record everything, all the documents will be preserved in the S and A software. But I think we have to do a board movement or a motion to, uh, to accept that report and bring it into our, under our process.
Would the next meeting be too early for that?
Nope, I don't know. Thank you.
I have one. The property on the river that the township owns north of Thornapple River Drive.
North Cascade Road on Thornapple Drive?
Yeah, sorry. Um, someone said, we're going to have to publicly talk about that because I understand property owners' concerns with what could happen to the river, but also at the same time, long-term long-term river property, part of a strategic plan. I'm just saying it because I know it's like the deer issue, but people have strong opinions on both sides. But there was a letter sent from, I think, a potential, I assume he's a developer, asking to buy the property that just came in. Haven't done anything with it, haven't responded, but I just think the more open we address it, I'm not even saying when, but.
Can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, we don't even have to make a decision. I see both, I mean, yeah, I just wanted to let, I just wanted to bring the topic up because I know there's.
I think we should go through the strategic plan first because it has a lot of verbiage in the strategic plan about river property and, and potential projects that the township would do. And I think we better digest this first before we start saying, what are we going to do with property that we have?
I, I think, Tom, you're probably right, but at the same time, we have to look at it as it is public property, you know, and what are we going to do with it? So maybe even a public hearing, I don't know, Tom, but yeah, you're right.
Or it should be at least accessible to the public right now, put a bench and put a.
Sure. Kayak.
Kayak, uh, launch or whatever. And I, I think that that was brought up at a meeting not too long ago, and somebody said, sure, they could do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, everybody owns it, we all own it. So I don't think, I don't know, are we doing anything? We're not keeping people off it, are we, right now, Ben?
No, we're essentially just not inviting people onto the property. So if somebody goes onto the property, it's public property. We haven't, you know, we certainly don't have any trespassing signs or anything like that, but we haven't done anything to invite the public to come and use that piece of property.
Okay. All right, so to be discussed, I know it's a big, and I'm not saying make any action. I just wanted to say that some, someone sent a letter to the township, addressed to the supervisor, offering to buy the parcels, I've done nothing with it. Brought it to you guys to mention it. Is what's the word, hasty?
Yeah, right.
In a bad way.
Good, good choice of words.
Developers are a dime a dozen, so I don't think it's like, oh, we're fine. If anything, we just sit on it for a while, a long time.
Well, then let's at least put it on the agenda and invite public comment.
Yes.
How long would it be to make a kayak launch?
Uh, we have a kayak launch, it's just the grass and then a little muddy drop off, and then you just pull your kayak over. I think it's.
So they could use it that way now, or you could fish from it.
So shallow, ankle deep.
You could take a section of fence out there and make it a whole lot more inviting to the public.
Does the fence go, I should know this, does the fence go across the whole thing?
Yes.
You can also go to Tessa Park, that's really, you put in Tessa Park, too.
But if we own it, might as well.
Upper and lower.
Say, okay, go ahead, Ben.
I was just going to say, to answer your question about the fence, it goes apart across the whole grassy section, but there is a drive, so there's a drive that goes down and actually accesses the other five or six houses that are along the river, kind of an easement that goes along there. So somebody could, that drive is actually on our property, so there is access to it. But again, we don't invite people, it's not advertised as a, you know, a public piece of property or anything like that, but.
Great, thank you. Well, it's good just to address the elephant in the room. Any other topics or comments for the discussion section? Public comments. Now's the time, anything? Except for Egypt Creek, that's the one thing we're not going to allow any comments on tonight.
Is on what?
Just TV.
Hello, everyone.
Yeah, we tried to proactively front you off with.
Brian Holcomb, thirty-four fifteen, Ben Stone Court, thank you for updating us on Eagle Creek. Of course, I don't know when they were put there, but if you go look right now, there's many bags full of, I'll call it lawn, whatever, that has been picked up someplace else and dumped on the piles of brush. So you know he's bringing stuff in and dumping it there.
Is it plastic bags?
Pardon?
Plastic bags?
No, the paper bags. But they didn't come from his property, he's buried a lot of them. These are new ones, like I said, I don't know when they were brought in, I don't know if they were there when you guys visited there, but there's, you can see it from the road just driving by, I'd say there's probably over fifty of them. So, you know, when can his special use permit be taken away? Because he's definitely in violation, he's definitely thumbing his nose, that's my opinion. That's all I'll say for right now, keep on the lawyers. In regards to deer, thank you for doing that. I think you should open it up for all of Cascade, I'm not a hunter. Fifteen is a start, I think you could go unlimited because we are killing more deer with our cars than you will get with the hunters in their boats. And I don't know as of when, but for years, Kent County was number one in the United States with car deer kills. I don't know if we still, we're up there high, but we were number one for more than three years in a row. So you're talking the whole United States, that's a lot of deer kills. We have a lot of deer here. So fifteen is a start, but I think you go unlimited in making it fair to everybody, especially bow, and open it up to more than just Peace Park, because we know Burton Park has a problem there, too. So the more the merrier, but let them kill them and take them home and eat them rather than hitting them with their cars and then our insurance goes up.
Ms. Wani was the one who contacted the, who found the person at Cornerstone, the professor? I think you were, right, Ginny, too? Yeah, she's been the deer expert. He's a professor, he's not a professor in deer, but the guy is environment, is a biologist. And, um, he was extremely knowledgeable, and then there's no easy answer, but he's doing the count for free.
Right.
We don't pay anything other than batteries.
I think you'd be surprised when he comes up with the count.
It's just a little depressing because it's.
There's no way they control, there's no, they can just one or.
Right, but we have a lot. Thanks.
Anyone else want to make any comments tonight? Good or bad?
Hi there, Scott Van Solkma. A couple of questions about, again, that property on Thornapple River. I don't know if you guys were aware that the Ada Village Bike Shop's up for sale or indoor lease, which is on the same side of the street. And if the whole proper point of buying that parcel, you know, ten, eleven parcels in from Cascade Road is to have another park, if there's this building that's out, has an available for sale, and the township should just grab it up and just buy it right now to glab, to glom onto that. Otherwise, the one that's ten, eleven parcels in, you might as well sell it because it's been sitting there vacant for six, seven years now, I believe, and it's really not doing anything. And then also to touch back with Egypt Creek, there, have those new piles of debris along that driveway, are those new? I've driven by there a few days. Has the new zoning administrator cited these people at all with municipal civil infractions? I mean, when I was in law enforcement, we would, I don't know if you guys remember the biodigester in Lowell, it stunk, they tried making energy from waste products. And apparently it was a big thing in Germany, but whoever was running it in Lowell didn't know what they were doing. And the whole town stunk. And when we would get complaints, we'd give them a ticket, we'd give them a ticket every single day, whenever they, we got complaints and have issues. And they never, they eventually got shut down because they didn't know what they were doing. But, you know, citing these, this business every day for not cleaning up, you don't have to have lawyers. You have your own employees, write them tickets, give them fines. If they don't pay the fines, add it onto their tax bill that they don't pay on time as we, as I sent in a report to you guys, that they pay it at the very last minute or, you know, within the two-year time grace period where they pay fees for late fees. But, so, those are my things, you know, you guys don't have to pay lawyers because the lawyer's guaranteed is probably getting paid more than your zoning administrator. So just throw that out there.
Last meeting, we talked about the ticket option, did did we get a chance to look into that yet? I know we've had a lot.
Yeah, so we're certainly looking into that. The material that's placed in the wetland is violation of a state regulations, not violation of a township ordinance, which is why we're continuing to lean on Eagle to take enforcement action.
Did we get an answer, can the township fine, or so I guess, and try to enforce a state law or violation of a state law, is that the gray area?
Yeah, we've got a very wishy-washy opinion on that.
And our attorney's right now is in a mobile home out west, in RV, I should say.
You can also contact the county prosecutor, he also sort of works for us and knows the laws. He'd be more than happy to probably answer your question, his name's Chris Becker. The other thing is just the piles of debris of, you know, which is a harbinger for rodents and other animals and things like that, which I'm pretty sure is, could be found in some of the local ordinances here, you know? When you're enforcing laws, you sometimes got to be creative, you know? Again, when I was in law enforcement, you follow a person long enough, you're going to find some sort of rule that they're breaking. So if you guys dig into the, to the laws that are on the books here in town, just like emptying garbage dumpsters after seven or before seven AM, if the commercial property abuts to a residential property, that's against the ordinances. And again, the last people didn't really want to enforce it for four years. I was sending emails and contacting and taking photos and everything like that.
How did that, are they doing it now at all?
No, they're finally seven o'clock on the dot, but they're, they're there. Sometimes, sometimes I'm also hearing them in the, in the afternoon, but I finally did get results, thank you.
Good. Thanks for your patience. Anyone else?
Good evening. Jeff Hughes, seven two five, serial red bud line. First of all, I've attended a lot of meetings over the last few months, tonight I think is the best.
Did you say the best?
The best. I really was impressed. Good questions, good discussion, good ideas. I really, so my compliments. Tonight, what I wanted to address, and you didn't rule out deer, so I'm going to talk about deer yet again, is last meeting's comment that the deer were here first. The reason I'm raising that is that's not the first time I've heard that argument. I've heard that a lot, and I don't think it's the last time you're going to hear that argument. It's a common argument for people who don't want to have the deer herd managed. Now, it's certainly true that the deer were here first, but you can say that about the trees, too. The trees were here first, yet we've permitted over the last fifty years countless trees to be cut down with various voices being raised. And I suspect that even more trees will be lost in the future as we continue to develop Cascade Township. My point is not that we stop cutting down trees, rather it is simply that who came first is really irrelevant, it seems to me, to that discussion. The, the fact is that there are consequences to the township's transformation from a largely rural countryside to a suburb. And that the question then is, what does the township do now about the consequences of its past actions? That seems to me is the question. Now, the answer for the trees is easy, you just adopt policies to preserve some areas to, so that they remain woodlands. And I think that was the purpose behind Burton Park, was to have a woodland preserve. The problem with the deer is, the answer isn't that easy. And that is, is because the deer have flourished as the result of the transformation. That was what I was trying to communicate last week. Biologically, deer reproduce unless they are checked. And I went through some of the reasons why they are reproducing so rapidly right now. One is because of the lack of predators, and that's both animal predators and human predators. The other is just simply the transformation
Thirty seconds.
of the property. The, what I do want to get to, though, is climate and how climate has affected it. Since nineteen seventy to nineteen twenty, there has been a considerable change in the climate, which has been to the favor of the deer. Temperatures have rise, there's fewer cold snaps, there are more and more warm, above-average warm days, and what that does is create longer, I'm done then, thank you. What this means is for us, smaller energy bills, but what it means for the deer population is, is that the herd as a general has a longer lifespan. Does have a longer lifespan to produce fawn offspring, and the offspring have a greater possibility of surviving a harsh winter. So I want to circle back to the argument that the deer were here first. Again, this is true on its face. What is not true is that they are now here in the same number. What is true is, is that we have a. What is true is, is that we have a lot more deer than when we first started developing Cascade Township into what it was. So I'm not for getting rid of the deer herd. I am simply for getting the deer herd back into a manageable number, back to where they were when we first were in this area, and it's a much smaller number, I suspect. I think that's Dr. Keys is going to, to say is a much smaller number than we have now. So thank you again for your time, and thank you again. I really did appreciate and enjoy the meeting tonight.
That was trustee Nordhook's agenda items. A lot of times they're.
Yeah, I know, I was, everyone, you were hitting them. I mean, everyone, so nice job, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online or anyone else in, in person?
If any of our Zoom participants would like to participate in this public comment about anything on the agenda or not on the agenda, please raise your hand or dial star nine if you are participating by phone. We'll wait a few moments. Doesn't look like anyone would like to comment.
Article twelve, manager comments.
Yeah, I gotta find my comments in this laundry list of things I've gotta do now this week. Just a couple of things I wanted to comment on real quick. We got some great news yesterday. Our initial pre-bid items came in for the fire station, and not only did we have multiple bidders on each one, but the low bids were below the engineer's estimate, so hopefully a great indication of things to come. So they're doing bidder interviews tomorrow, and those initial bids will be in front of the township board at our August tenth meeting for consideration. The rest of the project is now in, I don't know if the bids have been let quite yet, but the hope is that those bids will be back in front of the township board the second meeting in August for consideration. So moving right along there. Just a quick update on a street project in Cascade Township. So we had gone through, the road commission had gone through a series of public hearings and had bid out the expansion of Cascade Road project between Whitneyville and Thirty-Sixth Street. Their bid came back significantly over the engineer's estimate for that project. So they're in the process of putting that project on hold until two thousand and twenty-three. So as soon as they're, as soon as the road commission board approves that delay, they'll send communication directly out to the residents in the construction area so they know that that project has been delayed until two thousand and twenty-three. And a bit of good news, our put in on the tax-reverted property on Spalding was accepted. So there's no notice of claim that went in on that, so we were able to get that for taxes due, which is about fifty-eight hundred dollars. So we will add that to our inventory and in short order, figure out how we're gonna develop access to it. So we started having a few conversations around the office, and we'll figure out how to, how to survey that and put together some potential there. But I wanted everybody to know that, that property will be property of the township now.
So it's like ten acres off of Spalding, is that right?
So it's almost eleven acres, actually. I mean, it has a Spalding address, but it really isn't Spalding. It's back behind the, the Talpines Division, actually right on the border of Cascade Township. So if Patterson continued north where it dead ends, its western border would be on Patterson Road.
Great.
Thank you.
It's a good price.
Yep.
I went over there off of the Kentwood Park that it borders.
Oh, you did?
I did, and I walked the little path, and it was woods so big and dense that I turned around. But there was a creek running through, which I wasn't, didn't have the proper footwear, so explore that some other day, but it's, it's fabulous.
The meadows, the subdivision that's just, that's not a subdivision, it's just a sand. It's not even a trail. It's like a sand wasteland of undevelopment ugliness. He looks ripe for the picking for a cheap, I mean, that's pretty advantageous to him to have essentially a natural space at the end of his development.
Any negotiations there will probably be option one A, so.
I hope he doesn't pay his taxes. Keep adding it to the list. Anyone, anything else, Mr. Mantra Spazey?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, or comments?
Thanks for coming. You know, I always stand up here and thank people. You're my boss. Couple of new faces out there. If you don't know the new face that's sitting out there, introduce yourself. Some of the old timers that have been around here. You're part of this contingency now, so. New guys, thanks for coming down, and also anybody out there in Zoom land, thank you.
Hey, Mantra Spazey, can we get a, can you give us the lowdown on the road commissions? Just instant drawings or sketches about Bridge Over the Thornapple River on Cascade Road?
So I don't have any more information rather than what I updated last time, but basically what they've committed to is putting together some initial drawings and cost estimates. We did get the back-of-the-nap and cost estimate from them so we could apply for the ARPA funds, which we did do. But really, they're working on what I would call pre-preliminary engineering to determine what our options are. And at some point, we'll be able to bring those back to the township board to consider and figure out how we want to.
And the pathway committee, the newly formed pathway committee, will meet hopefully in August?
Yep, so we're gonna send out invitations shortly for some meeting.
Awesome. I really, I don't want to keep picking on Jenny, but you have just helped us out so much and people aren't gonna notice, but the, they will notice, but the nice articles in the newsletter, large, you're behind those, that I didn't realize the invasive bittersweet was just one of many invasive species. Ignorance is bliss, but since you've opened up that can of worms, you can't look away. It's better to know, so thank you. Your motion or additional comments?
I make a motion for dismissal since the business of this board has obviously been completed. Support.
Motion by trustee Shipley to adjourn, supported by trustee McDonald, all in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Motion carried. Have a great night. Thanks for coming out.
Little daughter has this look on her face like.
Hey, good, I'm glad, because you could have come some other times and had a much different experience.
There's little houses there, there's that.